Okay, seven o'clock. Hello, everyone, it's seven o'clock.
Six thirty.
But I haven't made any mistakes.
We missed the first half on.
This is twenty twenty.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Cass County Regular Board Meeting of the County Commissioners to Order, and I would like to have the invocation from Commissioner File.
Dear Lord, as we encounter the challenges in our county, give us the grace and the wisdom to make all the right decisions. We thank you for the blessing you shower down on us every day, and we ask that you protect our military as they are protecting us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Cobb?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, sir? Please call the roll.
Commissioner File.
Here.
Commissioner Bryce.
Here.
Commissioner Cobb.
Here.
Chair Marquetti.
Here.
Commissioner Dice.
Here.
Commissioner Osra.
Here.
And Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. We will have introduction of visitors, and we'll start with Ms. Sarah Colton. Sarah Colton, do I should get a please? Daniel?
Daniel Henkel, I'm running for State Representative.
Chair Marquetti, I'm the Township Supervisor.
Kathy Cobb, do I should?
And let's go. Thank you, go ahead, Hope.
Hope Anderson, Cass County Treasurer.
Ron McAdam, Cass County Historical Commissioner.
Ellen Powell, Cassopolis.
All right.
Richard Banky?
Sure.
Thank you, welcome, everybody. We have our first public comment, are there any public comments? Are there any public comments?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Daniel. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Daniel Henkel. I know quite a few of you in the room, I've met a few of you folks already. I'm running for State Representative, as we know, Aaron Miller's unfortunately term limited out. I like term limits, but it states we actually have a good rep in there doing a good job. But I just moved to this district not long ago, I am from southwest Michigan, originally from, born in Isles, raised in Buchanan. I currently live in Edwardsburg now, or Edwardsburg address, but is the 59th District, just across the line, so. I was in the military, four years in Navy. I've been a reserve police officer for, good well, twenty years at least in my life, I was, sorry, I was an explorer, about fourteen years old with the police department, so I've been doing that for a really long time. So I have a really good history of public service, I enjoy it, I like getting out in the community, I like interacting with people. It's a good way to just get to know your neighbors and really strengthen us as a community, and I feel like it's part of the problem we have nowadays with politics is folks just too many, they don't know each other well enough, and we just don't have a good repertoire going on, and we need to kind of get back to that, and we need to actually listen to each other and talk to each other and kind of identify and understand each other's, you know, ideas and complaints and problems, and it just, we need to strengthen that bond, and that's what I want to do, and I think Aaron's done a good job of that, and I want to continue that as your State Representative. So for those few of you that haven't met yet, I'm gonna stick around, I'll be around after the meeting, and I'd like to please chat with you and say hi, and see if I can get any feedback from you, because that's what it's all about, really, it's representing the people, it's not really about what I want up there in Lansing, it's about what you guys want. So I want to hear your feedback from the community and get to know you folks and what you guys would like to see, so, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there any other public comment? Okay, any other public comment? Okay, we'll go on with the meeting. Commissioner Bryce?
I move we approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda with support. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, any amendments? All right, all those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries. We have no recognitions tonight, no presentations tonight, and we have the consent agenda. Commissioner Dice?
I propose consent agenda, M dash fifteen dash twenty, the motion to approve claims dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty. M sixteen dash twenty, the motion to approve January ninth, twenty twenty, for the Commissioners' Regular Board Meeting, so moved.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, and Madam Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Yes. Commissioner File.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryce.
Yes.
Commissioner Cobb.
Yes.
Chair Marquetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Dice.
Yes.
And Commissioner Osra.
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, now we will have the Committee of Reports, Commissioner Osra?
Yes, I attended the road commission this morning, along with Commissioner Bryce, and pretty standard meeting, brought out the importance of us re getting our other seat filled, because they only had two inactive attendants, and they had to rely on one from a phone, or have a forum, so I hope we can get that seat filled soon as possible for them. Like I say, pretty routine, their audit was there, they got their audit report, clean audit, they chose your quarterly safety awards, Pawpaw, Chad Myers, Joe Bellina, and Brad Knight. They brought out their three-year equipment plan, they're starting to go forward and looking at future equipment needs, so they shared that with us. I've got a copy of it here if anybody wants to see it. They're going to also, well, they had all their, they didn't act on, but they got all their quotes for their bids for material for this year, paving materials primarily, but because they were just, came out yesterday, they didn't want to act on them yet, so they're gonna wait till the next meeting for that. That was really about the extent of it, was there anything else, Mike, that you recall?
Everything, like you said, was a standard meeting.
Yeah. That's all I have, any questions?
So you have that, their equipment, the three-year? Yeah, I'll take, I'll look at it.
I've got that, I've also got a copy of their audit, if anyone would like to see their audit.
Okay, thank you.
Also got that here, so.
Thank you. All right, moving along, Commissioner Bryce?
I have no.
No report, okay. Commissioner Dice, District Three?
I just have a few things from Howard Township, for that Board Meeting. They're talking about roads again, they're also talking about ambulance, they bought the, they're going to go, like, it's not life care.
Right.
Right. And I think they signed the contract, that's right.
Sure.
But they're still, we're still worried about it. That's one, that's one of the things we need to be concerned about. With the medical care facility yesterday, and we'll be meeting with them, with the committee, soon as we pick that complete committee, they have to pick someone for medical care facility, I don't know if they've done that yet, because it was yesterday they hadn't, and they hadn't emailed you, have they?
No.
Okay. So we have three people from the counties that's on there, but they're supposed to send one person.
There is one, they did select one.
Did they select one?
Yeah.
Okay, they were gonna email you and tell you?
Yeah.
Okay. So once they get that done, then we will meet with them, and we'll be asking out some things with the medical care facility. And that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Commissioner Dice? Okay, my report, I just had actually one meeting, the EDC met yesterday, we had a lengthy discussion on a variety of topics, which included preparing a business plan, they planned to, they also planned to attend the Supervisors' Meeting on January twenty ninth. They are serious about an EDC consultant for the county, and of course, they talked about the website. There was a very lengthy discussion on all of the topics mentioned, and a few other topics as well. So that's it, that's it for me. Any questions for me? Okay. District Five, Mr. Benjamin, District Six, Commissioner Bryce?
I attended several meetings, Howard Township, not any earth-shattering thing, they have an opportunity and they jumped on it, Indiana, Michigan Power, then replaced all their streetlights.
Oh, okay.
Pre-charge to them over a hundred plus, you know, with all LED lights, so that was kind of interesting.
It is.
LaGrange Township, basically nothing earth-shattering there, they had somebody give a presentation about solar and things like that, attended Community Corrections, Cass, also attended a Cass County Transportation Authority Board Meeting. Just give you, just a few numbers again, vehicle hours for the month of December was eight hundred and eighty-seven hours, vehicle miles was nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-seven that they traveled through the county. Passenger total, they had nineteen hundred and fifteen passengers for the month of December, what that worked out to be, contract riders, twelve hundred and seventy-two, and general public, six hundred and forty-three, and then they break it down by handicap and everything, but, yep, so going to meetings, not any earth-shattering things, same thing I reported to them, we weren't going any earth-shattering things, so, thank you.
That's good news.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Dear Howard Township Lights, I'm just thinking, any of those LEDs with our dark sky that we're starting to think about, are they better for that, or?
I don't know, I know it's less electricity, but, you know, that question didn't come up and I did not ask. We talked about dark skies there, I shared that with, you know, the parks did, but that was never a question that I asked.
Come up.
That's a good question. When the Village of Edwardsburg had their lights replaced, they talked with Robert Parish about it first, of course, he's from the village, so, you know, so apparently he was, he made some suggestions, but the electric company did the same thing with them.
My assumption is that LEDs would be better.
I would think, yeah.
I thought more focused.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. District Seven, Commissioner Cobb?
Yeah, I attended the hazardous waste, the solid waste consortium meeting in Pawpaw last night, and it was a pretty good meeting. An individual from Eagle, it's one of the state regulatory, I don't know if it's a committee or bureau, was there, and he was an expert on environmental pollution and things, who will be attending the meeting now, because he was stationed around Ann Arbor, but has moved to this side of the state, and so he had some pretty interesting information. But we have a technical advisor committee now, that we have a meeting, which are the three top people in Barien County, and Van Buren County, and, so they have put together a new contract for Deerpath, we've kind of negotiated with them a little bit, and as a matter of fact, Deerpath's sent us kind of a contract that we're gonna get back with them and kind of edit that a little bit, too, so we're kind of zeroing in on something for this year, and then next year, look at the possibility of opening it up to more of these tire vendors, but the only problem is, when you, you start getting far away, the cost isn't really offset because of the fact that they are far away, and they have to do this from a distance, as to Deerpath, so I guess we'll see what happens there, we'll be talking about it the rest of this year. We talked about some of our goals and strategic planning, electronics, recycling information, and the collection event data, which came from our hazardous waste collection, I don't know if you guys remember that, but we
Yeah.
Actually collected, it was pretty good this year, it was a little over nine thousand pounds of hazardous waste, so that includes pesticides and herbicides, antifreeze, and stuff like that, that did not end up in our landfills, so, and that's a good thing. Another one of our discussions was about what's happening along the shoreline of Lake Michigan, there's so far, I think, eleven houses that have went in, and the problem is, a lot of these houses are older, and has asbestos and different things that are hazardous, and people don't know where to bring that stuff, they're told to move out of the house because it's gonna fall off the shore, and there was a story about someone's house that was gonna go down, and of course, the first thing they do is take all their clothes and belongings and stuff out of the house, and, and if they don't have time, of course, they leave a lot of this stuff in there, and the one story that we had was a neighbor went over to one of these big waste hauler containers that they had brought in, and the thing was full of pesticides, and people just threw everything in there, and she called the hauler, who was regional, and they came out, looked in there, and confirmed it, yeah, and told those people, you can't throw this stuff in a landfill, and so, and that's the problem, this guy from Eagle is actually gonna look into if there are any grants available, so that they can kind of put some stations alongside the shore, you know, closer to Lake Michigan, where people who do have this type of stuff have someplace to take it and put it, they just can't wait for hazardous waste collection, they need to put it somewhere pretty quick, so, so he's gonna check into that, and, so, I'm gonna be planning also the hazardous waste collection in May again, and I think typically we've done it, the second weekend in May, we had to move it to the third Saturday in May, and for whatever reason, I think we had a little bit better response this year, so I may just move it to the third week, and the same thing with the tire collection, too, we moved that a week out, and normally that was on the same week as the fair, and so, and I moved that another week because the hauler couldn't do it that weekend, and I think the response was actually better this year than it has been in the last few years, so, but I'm gonna get that going. I had a guy call me the other day, had three pounds of mercury, and wanted to get rid of it, and I says, well, can you hold on to it till the middle of May? He says, well, I've had it for seventy-five years, so a little bit while longer won't matter. And I was thinking, if he's had it seventy-five years, how old is he? But anyway, he's gonna bring it, I told him, give me a call in April to verify which weekend it will be, so, and that was about it. Oh, other than we'll be sending, we kind of debated whether, normally every year, we receive five hundred dollars from our counties, each of the counties we represent, to establish a budget for our Solid Waste Committee, and we almost wasn't gonna do it, but I think we are, and in next year, kind of skip it, and see how it goes, so, and that was about it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Commissioner Dice has a question here.
Have you, can we, we can't find anybody with electronics yet.
No, well, what we were thinking here, because some of the other counties do have electronic collections, but Jill Adams, the, she's actually head of the whole thing in Barien County, I think she's the park and recreation director and everything, and they've got a very robust recycling system going, but she has a big staff over there because they, they fund it through a millage, and so, she's able to do a lot of the things, a lot of the kind of paperwork stuff and other things that most of the other counties can't do because there's nobody to do them, there isn't any staff, so she's, she's been real good, but the problem is with them, is you have to show county ID and stuff to prove that you're in Barien County for the electronics, so we're discussing making that open to the other counties possibly to haul that, so, but, you know, that's an idea, I'll check on it, and I think in the past, what it was, is we lost the hauler, the person that we paid
Yeah.
Went out of business because the, they just weren't getting any money out of the electronic stuff that was being turned in, so, but after our next meeting, I'll write that down, and see if we can come up with some kind of plan for that, that would be good.
Commissioner Bryce?
Actually, I got a couple of questions, would you maybe, you meet monthly, quarterly?
Meet every two months, and, and we changed our schedule a little bit this year, we were on the third Wednesday night, as a matter of fact, it'd be great if someone else wants to come up there sometime and, you know, attend the meeting, and, but it's the fourth Wednesday now, every other month, and at six-thirty, we moved the time a little bit, too. So the next meeting will be March twenty-fifth.
My follow-up question, have your committee talked about tractor tires and semi-tires? Howard Township approached me again, you know, they know we do this.
We talked about it last night, and we can accept semi-truck tires. Tractor tires, implement tires like that is a whole nother thing, because none of the people like Deerpath want them.
I was gonna ask that.
And, but they will take them, but they, they have to actually, like, take a chainsaw and cut them all up and everything, and there's a big fine if those are put in those trailers and brought back to them, you can actually be fined for that, but if you kind of pre-arrange it somehow or another, I guess they'll take them, but they're, they're still a big charge to take them, but they have to cut them up and grind them up, and they can't use them for some of the other stuff that they, for whatever reason, they use the regular tires for, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Cobb? Thank you, that's such a great service that the county does, the hazardous waste and the tires, and if you've ever worked the tire drop off, you know, people come with five fifty, sixty tires, it's just incredible, huh? But I'm always glad to see it, because I know that then I won't see those tires by the side of the road.
Mosquito hatchery.
That's right.
And the people are very, very appreciative.
They are.
We just have so many comments about, oh, thank you, thank you for doing this, you know, so.
That's true, yeah, so, thank you. Okay, the Appointments Committee report, well, the last, we met last, last Thursday, we had over a two-hour meeting, and you can see the results of our meeting with these motions. Our next meeting is going to be Thursday, the sixth, no, that's not right, Thursday, I'm not sure when it is, our next meeting, Annie, when's our next meeting?
I, I don't know, we didn't, we didn't
We didn't set it, but, we are meeting this Thursday, so we'll meet next Thursday, which is the thirtieth. Our next meeting will be the thirtieth, that's right, and
At one o'clock.
At one o'clock, yes, and Commissioner Dice, myself, Commissioner File, we were at those meetings, and we're really gonna get serious next meeting about the road commission, so keep that in mind.
We've been serious, sorry.
Yes, you have, you do, yes, we have been serious, and we, that was part of why the meeting lasted two hours, it normally lasts about an hour, but, all right, how about the Administrator's Report, Mr. Collins?
We had a successful art exhibit this past Saturday, estimated one hundred and seventy-five people attended, and it is a nice way to promote Cass County to others outside of the county. Was told that several artists are exhibiting their artwork from places in Indiana and many other cities outside of Cass County, so that's always positive, and I just want to remind everyone that there were no public funds that were spent in promoting this and putting it on, so it's always a positive thing as well. We'll be handing out a couple of press releases, one of them is for, if you've, I don't know if you've noticed, by McDonald's, the billboard is a 4H billboard. Cass County was chosen as a location for a national billboard campaign promoting 4H, so that's a very, very good thing. We also have Brian Kimmon is the Fair Board President, he is re-elected for a third term as the Michigan Association of Fairs and Exhibits, he was re-elected as their president, so that's something to be proud of. We have selected members to be on the Medical Care Elder Steering Committee, and there are three Commissioners, Commissioner Marquetti, Commissioner File, and Commissioner Dice, Christian Lutz from the Medical Care Facility, Sue Dobrich, our Chief Judge, Marty Harty is the Counsel and Agent Director, Mary Middleton from the Cassopolis Health Clinic, Tim Scott from Woodlands, Jeff Elliott from the Health Department, Jeff Carmen, myself, and Rick Schefer from the Medical Care Board are on that committee, and we expect to be meeting in the next week or two to start getting some ideas of how we move forward with devising a plan for elder care. And want to give you an update on the Historic Courthouse Project, I know that Jeff has been working with Dave Dickey, they are working to put together a plan where the Maintenance Department, along with Dave, looks at removing the ceiling tile, the grid work, and the floor coverings from the third floor, just to get an idea of how long it takes and what type of infrastructure we can identify. We don't want to do any type of walls at this time, because that then involves electrical and, you know, getting that taken care of ahead of time, and we expect to have a plan to the Board of Commissioners at the second meeting in February of how we move forward from that point on, after we've learned some of, some of the things that they're gonna uncover and how long it takes. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Collins? Any questions? Okay, moving right along, the financial report was in your packet. We have no unfinished business, we have new business, and we have some motions, Commissioner Osra?
Okay, first motion, motion seventeen dash twenty, the motion to approve the purchase of electronic recording of document software from BSNA Software at a cost of six thousand dollars to be paid out of line item six-one-six dash two-five-four dash eight-zero-one-point-zero-one-seven, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the motion M seventeen dash twenty passes. R dash eighteen dash twenty, Mr. Fox?
This is two thousand and nineteen Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement, whereas the two thousand, two thousand and nineteen Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between County of Van Buren and the County of Cass has been submitted to the Cass County Board of Commissioners for approval, now therefore be it resolved that the Cass County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the County of Cass, hereby accepts and binds the County of Cass to the terms and conditions of the agreement, and authorizes Roseanne Marquetti and Jeff Carmen to execute the agreement, I so moved.
We have a motion and resolution and a support, is there any discussion on the resolution? Madam Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobb?
Yes.
Chair Marquetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Dice?
Yes.
Commissioner Osra?
Yes.
And Commissioner File?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobb, M dash nineteen?
A motion to, M dash nineteen dash twenty is a motion to appoint Sarah Colton to the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on motion M nineteen? My only comment is, thank you, Sarah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. M dash twenty dash twenty, Commissioner Osra?
Yes, the motion is to appoint Mike Bryce to the Community Correction Advisory Board for a term ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, and I so moved. Support.
Okay, we Okay, we have a motion and, uh, M dash twenty dash twenty, uh, and support for that motion. Uh, is there any discussion?
Got a question.
Okay.
Uh, both these people are on the same board, but I notice they have different term ending dates. One's September 30th, another one's December 31st. Is there a reason for that?
There's probably, well, if there is, I, I can't answer that, but we see that a lot with these, with these appointments, that some of them, I think that what happened was when these were first, these committees and boards were first formed, they were staggered dates. And so that's how one person ends at one time and one person ends at another.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this motion? All right, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number five, we have discussion on the road commission vacancy? And, um, I'll just start off by saying we had six applicants. One went through, and yesterday we received another applicant, and now we are back to six. Now, all of those applications are in a folder in the Administration Office. We've learned that there was an interest in interviewing all six and an interest in the Appointments and Resolutions Committees selecting those we will interview. We're working on that. Uh, we're committed to getting this done as soon as possible. I talked with, um, two Commissioners today, and, um, we will be, uh, discussing this at the next Appointments Committee meeting, and we'll get it all set up. And, does anybody have any questions or any comments that they want to make on this? Commissioner Grace?
So I'm just a little confused.
Okay.
This board doesn't interview anybody, or is it the Appointment Committee gonna just do it and bring names back to it? What's happening? How that?
Well, Jeff and I haven't discussed it, I, exactly, but I did email him today. Here's how I think it's going to work, um, because these were the requests from the Commissioners. Um, next, when, next Thursday, we will narrow the field down, and then anyone who wishes to interview can come and interview. We'll set up a time and a date for, we'll, we'll end up with two or three, um, finalists, and then anyone who wants to interview can come in. Commissioner Dykes, aye, and Commissioner File, we'll cycle off of that board so that we don't have a forum problem, and they, they will be interviewed. And it is an open meeting, so.
So, so the seven Commissioners are not gonna interview?
No, not at this point. Um, when we, when we talked to the Commissioners, Commissioner Dykes, Commissioner File, and myself, we talked to them, most of the Commissioners were, were willing that the Appointments Committee filter it down. But there were two Commissioners who wanted to interview, and we want to accommodate those Commissioners and anybody, and anyone else, if another Commissioner wants to as well. We'll work that out.
So the Appointment Committee is going to interview?
We will. We'll, we'll filter it down. We're, we're not going to interview, we're gonna filter it down through their applications.
Okay.
Okay, we'll look at the applications.
So there will be no interviews?
Yes, there will be three interviews, or we'll interview two or three, once we narrow it down to the three top candidates, or two top candidates, depending.
And, and I guess, you know, like, if you want to interview, which you're allowed to do, you can do that, because I would step out if, so we don't have a forum, I would step out if you want to interview, and if we interviewed them separately. But we're not, we're not gonna interview them at this meeting.
No, we're not.
At a board meeting.
So if it's an open meeting, why don't we just post it?
We will post it.
So we can all stay in there.
Well, we can do that.
We post it, a forum.
That's an option, that's an option. We can do that, yes. We can do that, yes.
Yeah, we think so.
Yes.
Commissioner File?
But you're saying that we won't be interviewing all seven or all six?
No. No. This, this is kind of a compromise between, what, five Commissioners, one, and one, two Commissioners now, so we're trying to compromise that.
Well, you didn't count me, so there's three that we thought we should interview all seven, six.
Oh, um, I, I had you down as, um.
No.
No. Okay.
Still four, three.
It's still four, three, okay.
And, and it's, I know, I, we talk, I talk to Terry and my brother, too.
Clark?
Yeah.
I guess, we had different ideas on it, and I had ideas on it. We have to think sometimes, too, and I thought, I, I talked to, um, I think the committee's very important. I think what I thought was that if the, if the committee's gonna interview, then that's kind of a job taken, so the Commissioners don't have to do all that one. You got, you know, a few, I, the committee's gonna do the interviewing and do the, the vetting of those people. To bring them back to this meeting is almost like double working, isn't it? It's like, if you put those people in a public meeting, you have to think about that. If there's six people applying for that job, we have five, six people in this meeting in a public meeting, and you're gonna, one of those people, five of those people are gonna get sent out in a public meeting. I just don't think it's professional. It's kind of, if we're gonna do it, let's do it. So, cause we're gonna ask those five people, you wanna come in and do other things, and they're gonna say, some people say, well, I don't wanna be in public, a lot of people don't wanna be in front of public people. They wanna do that interview kind of on your own. I've talked to some people. Commissioner File?
Commissioner File, go ahead.
Well, when five or six come, they know there's only gonna be one picked, so they know that they may not get picked, so. And it's always, you know, that's the way it's always been done, so. Haven't had anybody call me later crying, so.
One of the things, along with what Commissioner Dykes says, is we're looking at, trying to be, have a little bit of grace, so that, because we only, we are only gonna pick one, and so we're, we are trying to keep it so that the people who don't get picked will be willing to serve on other boards, let's put it that way, that they won't get so, well, they didn't want me for the road commission, so I don't want anything else, so that's one of, that's one of the reasons. We, we just wanna try and be a little bit graceful about it. Commissioner Cobb had his hand up first.
But that, they may think that anyway, even if they're not brought up for an interview, they might think that. My idea was just to have either just a ten-minute interview, just do all six of them, that's only an hour, and then at the next regular commission meeting, we could, in the past, this was something I suggested that we did, we just put one, two, three, four, five, six, and everybody, um, just list their, you know, first pick down, and narrow it down that way, and then you could have yet another vote after that, say, uh, three of them are eliminated or even four of them eliminated, then you could just do the same thing again, put that down, and that would be considered the vote. So, I don't know, that's, that's kind of how we did it before.
Yes, that's how we have done it, yes. Commissioner Grace, she had a stand-up commission.
The only question I have, the Appointment Committee, do they actually, for every opening we have, do you sit down and interview a client to come in, or do you just take their name on a piece of paper and appoint them?
Well, we don't just take their name on a piece of paper and appoint them, but we talk about them, we, we, we made phone calls. Actually, we haven't had a situation outside of the road commission where we've had a great number of people applying for one position. So, it, when you only have one or two people, you look at, you look at their, their application, and from their application, you, you make a decision. Sometimes on the applications, they put down, um, uh, other commissions that they're interested in, then we look at them for those other commissions as well. Um, Terry?
Well, I'm thinking back, you know, I don't have a lot of history here, but I know our last time we filled a seat there, I think it was for Commissioner Clark, you know, we interviewed.
Yes, we did.
Prior to a meeting.
Yes, we did.
We interviewed all the candidates.
Yes, we did.
And I didn't think anybody was, felt bad that, you know, cause there was five or six people at that time.
Yes, there were.
That we interviewed, very similar.
Yeah, that's true.
So I'm just.
Commissioner Grace?
What, just to go on what Terry said, that's actually true because one of them wasn't picked, but he applied again, and now he's on that board, so, you know, that's just historically information that, that happened that way.
Okay, Commissioner Cobb?
And I think this, uh, road commission is kind of a level up than, you know, some of the other ones, so it may be appropriate to do that. I think six, I mean, if we had twenty people, uh, applying, I think filtering them down to three or four would probably be a good thing to do, instead of trying to interview them all, but, and I think six is, to me, like, the envelope, just, you know, that would be probably the maximum amount that, uh, you would bring them all in and interview them, but, you know, that's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Grace?
Just wanted to share with you, I was wondering, the Commissioners said I'd like to pare down and just interview like three.
Yes.
I didn't want to interview all six. Um, the only thing I'm requesting, I know that's our goal, we do something soon, get them appointed, maybe the first meeting in February, so they can be ready to go and meet the road commission board on their next meeting, at the end of February, cause they actually do need it.
Oh, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, yes. I talked to a road commissioner this afternoon, and so I'm, I'm well aware of that. I'm well aware of, so, okay, so what am I hearing? Commissioner Dykes?
Show of hands.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna interview these people as a group, but, you know, I, when I didn't finish, I was just gonna say also, is that we have to make parity with all of our groups, we can't, I know it's, everybody says the road commission's a different deal, but it is a different deal, but we don't contribute any money to the road commission. We give $230,000 to the Health Department, we give $200,000 to the Woodlands, so we don't give any money to the, to the road commission, so we don't, so when it comes down to making parity to all of these groups, we have to, even though there's six people applying for that, we have to set an example, that we can't say that we're leaning one, to one group over the other, because as a group, we need to make sure everybody gets the same treatment. And so we have to be careful when we say we're just gonna do this for the road commission. We have to say that the parity for anybody applying for any board is the same, and regardless if it's one person, if you wanna vet that one person, then you'd have to interview that one person. And it, it would bother me as a, as a person in the community to say I'm gonna put that much effort just on one committee, because what happens in, people say like, are we, are we as important as anybody else? So we have to be careful there, and it's not that we're saying road commission is not important, but like I said, we don't, we don't, we might be controlling the road commission, it's, it's not, we, we, we pick that board, but we don't give them any funds, we have no control of what they do, so we need to consider that when we're saying how important some of these things are. There are other organizations that we've put a lot of money into, and we're acting like those aren't as important. They're probably more important, or just as important. Cass County doesn't work on just road commission, and I'm not picking on road commission, I just think we need to make sure that we have parity with all our committees.
Just one more comment.
Okay.
As to the importance of it is, if there's anything, when I go out and campaign and I knock on probably just about every door in my district, and I talk to people, if there's any one thing that they question me about and more concerned about than anything are the roads in Cass County. Those are the most common comments, you know, that, or their concerns about, and, and of course, a lot of people don't understand it, they think that we're, you know, in control of the, the road commission or something, and I go through it and explain, you know, how that works, that we just, uh, put in place the road commissioners, and from that point on, you know, they're anonymous, we're autonomous from us, so. But it is a really big issue, and I know that just from talking with people, more than any, any other issue almost.
I'm glad I don't have to say that we control it. I'm glad they say like, that's really not our.
Yeah, I, I do too, but that's what a lot of people think, they don't, they don't quite understand how.
But anyway, that's, where are we going next?
Yeah, okay, we have to move on, but, um, but let me say this, is this, is this, would this be a possibility? The Appointments Committee narrows it down to three, and we bring in three, and all of us interview three, or two?
That, that's, that's better than just bring us an appointment, I, I, I think, I, I think it's important that the seven of us hear these people.
Okay.
Even though we're not skilled at, you know, interview or, you know, that kind of stuff, but you, you still pick up things in a conversation. Um, I, I think it's important, so, I could, I could agree with that.
Well, I look at it as if, if, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, so I'd be like to do it the old way, but if the rest of the board wants to do it that way, then that's fine.
Okay.
Let's do a show of hands, how we want to. All six or three?
All six or three. Um, three, just a strong vote, three? How many, three?
Three is the, we're talking about?
Um, we, the Appointments Committee narrows it down to three, and then we interview three.
Oh.
Okay. Fine with you?
Yeah.
Fine with Skip?
Him the choice, I'm, I'm gonna vote for six, but.
Okay. Um, it's fine with me, it's fine with Skip?
I'd rather have six.
You want six?
I'm good with three or six.
So we got, Annie, we got, so we got three.
We got six and a half, yeah.
Six, six, okay. All right.
So is it out of here, three and a half?
Yes, it is, it is.
Four.
Okay, all right, well, we need to move on, thank you very much.
So what do we, what do we, what do we do?
So we're, we're, well, we can't just go back and vote again, because actually, it's not a motion, it was just a strong vote, so, um, I'll, I'll meet with, with, um, Mr. Carmen, and we'll, we'll work it out.
Right.
Okay.
And you're still, Chairman, you're still gonna meet on Thursday, the 30th?
Yeah, we still meet on Thursday, the 30th.
I'm making a big deal here, but I won't be here, I apologize. I will be out of town, but, um, you guys have my blessing, but I think we should have a new.
You think we should interview all of them?
Well, if that's what the group wants, yes, I'm uncomfortable either way, but we did the Woodland Board when we appointed them, not too long ago, we interviewed quite a few here, so.
Okay. Okay, we can, we can work with that. Thank you. All right. Okay, moving right along. Uh, we have our second public comment. Any other public, any, any other public comment? Any other public comment? Oh wait, we have a closed session? No closed session? Board member comments and announcements? Any board member comments and announcements? Annie?
I'm pretty sure there's not gonna be any too, this Saturday night.
Did they tune last Saturday?
No.
No?
It's on the road, I'm looking.
Any other, any other Commissioner comments?
Yep, I just wanted to share that I think Mr. Carmen did an outstanding job on that art show.
Oh, it was wonderful.
And there was a lot of interest.
Yes.
The building was full of people, several of us was here, and I just think we gotta say thank you to him.
Yes, indeed, we do.
Yep.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment. I, um, we went around, there were four of us, Commissioners, there were five of us?
Please, four.
And I was gonna wear, I was gonna wear my name badge, but our name badge, you know, you ever put your name badges, they're, they're designed for a men's lapel?
Yes, they are.
Which probably most women can't wear.
No, I, I never wear mine.
Maybe you wear one Jerry's, yeah. I always wanna say nonsense, we have, um, the new people that are doing the new, can we get new name tags that are small enough, that are nice enough, because Jeff wanted to introduce us to everybody, but we should have name tags that are cordial, that are nice enough, where, am I reaching too far out there? What do you think? I know you.
Not you.
The one, the one I have, I have the one, and it's just gaudy, for one thing, and I know it doesn't fit, women's clothes, it won't fit in women's clothes.
No, mine's in my purse.
So, I think, when we have these, when we were all at that, if we had our name tags, because Jeff said, I wanna come introduce you to people, I wanna introduce you to people, and we should have our name tags with your name on it, the commissary.
I think you have a good idea, so.
Yeah, I would, I agree with that as well.
We'll look into it.
Yeah. Something a little bit smaller.
A little bit smaller. Okay.
All right.
I was saying.
All right, is there any other commissioner comments or announcements? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion stands. I know, I know, I never wear, I never do. I have things that never.
Smart P.